Hot car meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda, item nine superintendent's report, item A, Career Readiness Academy update, appendix D, Dr. Holliday.
This is a reminder for the board to carry over from the last meeting that we postponed.
I promise you all, I'm gonna be really, really quick, but I couldn't help but think when the golf man was up here talking about hitting your driver, I've never been able to hit a driver, I've tried everything in the world, hit a driver, and you remember, you might remember Mr. Hayes when Norm Sharon was here, he was quite a golfer, and I was playing golf with Norm one day, and Norm said, can't hit a driver, hit you one iron, and Tony Lapaca said, you know what Lee Trevino says about a one iron? He says if you're out on a golf course, and it starts to thunder and lightning, you take your one iron out of your bag and hold it straight up in the air, and he said, why do you do that? Lee Trevino said, because God can't hit a one iron, and that's pretty much where I am. So, anyway, I'm just here real quick to give you a quick update, not asking you for anything tonight, I'm not like Dawn, I'm not asking you for a million dollars, I'm just telling you that we've got a, what you have already approved, we've been working on, and just to give you a quick update of our Career Readiness Academy. We've already begun our recruitment, we've been working through our schools, we had our parent open house night back on April 29th, had several families come, it was a, it was a nice night, the staff had a good time with them, and they did it with the Connect Five, I'm gonna ask you about that a little bit later, and I am gonna be asking you for some money, but don't worry about that right now. But we did do that, and we're working directly with the schools to get individual referrals, and that's going well right now. Marketing, we've, we've worked with UNCW in their advanced public relations and marketing classes, one of their professors has come and has worked with us, and we're working through that at no cost to us, we're also working, Belita's helping us with that as well. Business partnerships, we've already established a business partnership with AT&amp;T, they're gonna allow us to do some job shadowing and some mentoring of our, of our students, so we, we're, we're working on some more, but we've already got that one nailed down. Instruction, we've already started doing some collaborative lesson plans right now with the students that we have, our teachers are involved in PLCs and are working through those, our, our instructional coach, who used to be one of the teachers out of the early college, out of Wilmington Early College, is now the instructional, this year became instructional coach at, at Mosley, is working with the AIG folks to get that established, so that we can get that, get that going. We had an exciting visit, our, our staff did, to Olympic High School in Charlotte, where they've got some similar things going on, and one of the things that came out of that was this staff development opportunity this summer, we're gonna be using some, some CTE money, along with some other money that Mary Hazel has found for me, and we're gonna send a team of seven to this national conference that will put together, help us put together our model, and so we're real excited about being able to do that, and we were able to hook up with the Olympic folks in doing that. We're continuing to get our staff ready for this, and in fact, one of our teachers has already received a credential, a Microsoft credential, so again, we're very excited about that. Our career week, we worked with some of the folks at Cape Fear Community College, Brian Weeks, who is the liaison for the other of Cape Fear's early college programs, the one in Pender County, I've known Steve Snitzler for years, he's the CEO of Port City Java, College of Wilmington, and some other folks, the Aquarium, Jeff Gordon's always been a good, a good, a good, a good supporter, even though he's not racing really well right now, he comes and helps us.
Some downtime.
Just, just a car lot. And we've actually had a Skyping session with Director of FedEx up in Alaska, so again, some cool things going on. Some of our businesses are even getting excited about this, Greg's Uniforms, which is one of our local retail uniform distributors here in town, has donated seventy-five uniforms for our program, and Tech Link has given us a thousand dollars. Again, we're continuing to work with PR, did our UNCW Dress for Success Fashion Show, it was featured on our website, you could see it, and we also had Career Day, and the New Hanover County Schools TV was out there for that as well. So we're well on our way, thank you again for working with us on this, we understand you're all very interested in, in vocational opportunities for our kids, and even the, the new vocational high school that we're thinking about, we're, we're gonna be talking about, we think this can kinda plug into that, and, and give our kids an alter, an alternative kinda high school program, get them into the world of work a little bit quicker, so we're real excited about the opportunities to start here, but again, just, this is just a start, because we're gonna jump forward into some other things with you down the road, but again, thank you for letting us get started. Any questions? Was that quick enough?
What kind of uniforms are you talking about?
These were like, you know, Greg's has like the medical uniforms, the scrubs, and also the, like the chefware and things of that nature, that's, that's what they have there. Any other questions?
No, this is exciting, very good.
I talk fast, Ms. Higgins.
Yeah.
I had another couple of stories to tell, but Dr. Markley said don't. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Holliday.
Item B, CTE Working Group, Dr. Markley.
This is really just an announcement, there's been a lot of talk about vocational high school, a lot of, a lot of folks here in the board have done things to get that process rolling, and so I wanna formalize that process with the creation of a CTE Working Group, and we'll invite community members, folks from the Community College, and potential partners to be part of that group, we'll run it not as a board committee, but like we've done in the past with business advisory and those kinds of committees, as a superintendent's committee, so, once we've got the, the full committee, the partners in, like to do maybe just a large announcement of some of those folks who are gonna work with us, but there just, there's a lot of momentum around this, and it's time that we take that momentum a, a, and start it, moving in the right direction.
And I was talking to Dr. Markley about this, and what we had discussed was to, instead of assigning, I know Mr. Higgins would be very instrumental in this, because of his background with the Community College and so forth, but that, what we were gonna do was, he was gonna have a group, this working group, and then any board member that wanted to take part, it would just be open to all board members to take part in there, as, as they see fit and are able to make those meetings, so it'd be like a committee made up, well, their working committee, but it, board members that want to take part also. Anything else?
That's it.
Any questions or?
What's the, what's the timeline on that?
We had an informal meeting with, with some folks, so like to get that group up and running within the next thirty days, because I'd like to have, I'd like that group to bring a proposal to the board in the fall, because it will have to be part of our, our budget process.
Okay, item ten consensus items, item A Personnel, appendix D, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, we would request the board approve Personnel Matters as presented.
Need for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item B, Change of School Assignment, appendix F, Dr. Holliday. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is just a routine release of students whose parents are employed by surrounding school districts, and ask, could you approve that?
Need for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved, thank you. Item C, Budget Amendments, appendix G, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I request the board's approval, and just wanted to point out that the format on the capital outlay project detail is a little, has a, a new column that shows the multi-year project totals that hopefully you'll find helpful, so if you have any other suggest, suggestions to format, please let me know.
Need for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved, thank you. Item eleven, under Old Business, item A Policies on the Second Reading, Mrs. Nichols.
We have two policies tonight, one is forty-one forty Administration of First Aid by School Employees, and as we were looking at it, and of course this is second reading, we determined it should be in the eight thousand series, so that number's gonna change to eighty-three hundred, the only change is of course is just updating the references and a little bit more clarification with the, and we'll take these together since they're from the same division, the Buildings and Ground Security Policy forty-two-ten, we again just did some extending explanation and the references, so in most cases, we're just looking at all of our policies now, making sure that we are up to date with the state and federal regulations.
Need for approval?
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item B, Legion Stadium Sound System and School Board Upgrades, appendix I, Dr. Markley.
I'm gonna ask that the board table this, there are still some issues being worked out with the city attorney, so I would ask we table this till the next regular board meeting.
I don't think we need a motion to do that, because of...
Yeah, we'll just table it, and, because I know that we're working out some of the language.
There's some, there's discussion about length of the, length of the contract, and it's still being worked out.
Okay, item C, Design Consultant Agreement for Northeast Elementary School, appendix J, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, request that the board approve the remaining design contract amount for LS three P for the Northeast Elementary School, two-hundred-and-eight-thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars, which will bring the total to six-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
Need for approval?
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item twelve, under New Business, item A, Laney High School Gym Renovations, appendix Double D, Dr. Markley.
Hey, I know Laney High School is a school that Michael Jordan graduated from, and has had a long working relationship with Nike, over the years, they've done some painting and design work on the gym, they'd like to do that again with us, they'll bring them the actual design forward at a, at a later date, but we're asking for approval to allow Laney to work with Nike Corporation for those gym upgrades.
Need for approval?
Second.
Second, any comments or questions? Of course, I'm also trying to get them to go, go ahead in Air Condition Brogdon Hall while they're at it, but I'm not having much success there.
Let me see Kenny Gaddish.
Yeah, Kenny Gaddish, yeah, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, it's approved. Item B, APY City Letter of Intent, appendix K, Dawn Brinson.
Yes, I request that the board approve the letter of intent from Appy City, so that way they can move on and create, start creating the apps for all the schools, the letter is not legally binding, it's only for seventy-five days, it just gives them the, the notice to proceed until they can come up with formal, more formal terms and conditions that we are agreeable on.
Need for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions?
Dawn, in the initial letter agreement, we had, they had indicated sixty days under the agreement, is that right? What's the reason for the addition?
I can answer that, Ms. Koval, because I changed it, my thinking was that, I didn't know when the board meetings would fall, and I didn't want to have the, the agreement expire before our, I guess it would be, we're in May, so June, before our July meeting, so I just said seventy-five days to make sure we have our July meeting as an opportunity to examine the final agreement before this expires.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved, thank you. Item C, Kindergarten Health Assessment, BMI Data Discussion, appendix L, Dr. Markley.
Last week you had a presentation from the county folks, and they're here tonight if there are questions, follow-up questions, but they were requesting that we make a modification to the letter that we sent home to parents related to a collection of information, a copy of that letter is, is attached, and just requesting that, in addition to what they normally collect, also to collect the height and weight screening for BMI, and then notifying them that that data would be, they'd get the data as a parent, but the only data that would be collected beyond that would be aggregate data for that grade level.
Need for approval?
Well, I had a comment.
Comments, questions?
In reading this, i-if the parent doesn't receive the information, because it says let them know if they don't want their child to participate, so I think there needs to be a clip and return for yes or no for the files.
An opt-in?
Opt-in or opt-out, because we need a record for sure, because if the child doesn't bring it home, and then they assume that the parent is in agreement.
For sex education, we kinda went with an opt-in provision, didn't we?
Yes, but this...
I know we had that discussion years ago.
But this is not the traditional...
Well, I mean, I, I think, I think Ms. Koval was just simply saying, I mean...
Well, we need to know whether they get the information or not.
Well, I mean, if they opt-in, obviously they got it, if they didn't, then, you know, you follow up.
And they may have a part.
Because, I mean, I suspect, my suspicion is that, one way or the other, I, I don't know whether they would send it back even if they said no, unless they had a, you know, violent opposition to it.
But they may not receive the letter.
Well, they may not, and if they, if they, if you have an opt-in provision, then...
That would work, okay. Dr. Markley, who is the committee? If I'm the parent and it says committee, I still don't know who...
Health Arama would be the, it's, it's the committee through the, through the county office, DHS, I mean DHS, excuse me.
But I'm saying for the parent, they need a little bit more clarification, I know in the recommendation, it talks about the collection that's gonna be executed by the school nurses, so maybe we should have more clarification in that letter.
Actually, if I could provide some clarification, this is actually your existing standard letter, the procedure that the school follows, we're just adding on to what the school already does, the school health arama committee is actually the internal school committee that is actually, this is your own form and it's actually done through the DC office, so what we're doing here is just saying, you currently, you currently only use an opt-out procedure for all your health arama, it'd be an idea that would not be sent home under any circumstance, which is what's being out on in here, it would just be collected at an aggregate level, and it's letting them know it would be collected at an aggregate lev-level, and they will not be receiving it coming home, but just letting them know that it would be corrected. They have the option today to either notify the school nurse, or to notify their teacher who uses the same procedure that they follow today for all of the existing health aramas, which certainly include the hearing and vision screenings.
But I understand, but if they don't get the letter, if the child doesn't bring it home...
We're willing to, we, the county's just asking to follow whatever procedure the school wants to follow, this is your existing procedure, but if the school board elects to do it as an opt-in, that's, we're more than happy to sign on to whatever the appropriate policy.
It's the same form, all we added, if I remember from the other presentation, was height and weight, is that right?
Correct, we are, we're asking the sex and the birth date, but we're not recording any of that information, we need that to calculate the BMI onsite right at that point in time, so we need BMI and the percentile.
I'm sorry, you said you were also asking the sex and the birth?
Can I get a good of the microphone?
Sorry.
Hi, good evening. My name is Beth Schrader, and I'm the Strategy and Policy Manager for New Hanover County. Yes, so if, if you recall back on the twenty-first when I came to present to you, we talked about the fact that for children that are under the age of eighteen, children and teens, that to calculate BMI, BMI is an, an age and sex specific calculation, so you need to ask what the age is, and you need to know what the sex is in order to take the height and weight and actually do the calculations, so they will actually be entering the information into the calculator, take the output, and the output is what's going to be recorded. There's no identifying information that is being recorded associated with it.
I guess the concern that I have is, is to one end, because when you look at the things that we as a school system do to ensure enough exercise for the student, proper nutrition and, and education along those lines, the, the meals that we provide are strictly regulated through the federal government, I, I really don't understand why this information needs to be collected when you have, well, there, there's an, an organization called the National Collaborative on Child Obesity Research, and there are over a hundred and five data collection points on childhood obesity specifically, within the school, within schools, so I'm sure that this information is being collected on an, on an aggregate level, I, I'm not comfortable allowing this kind of intrusion on, on families at this, you know, I don't, I don't understand why you need to make this, or take this information, if, if only, unless you're, you're intending to at some point impose some sort of regulation or requirement on the school system in addition to what we're already providing.
I think this is more to help them, guide them with their planning, where to put their resources, they've identified early childhood as a county priority in their strategic plan, and so in order to, to be able to target what resources they have, they need data on where those kids are, so they can put community resources in, where they can decide if they want Parks and Rec to have a greater impact in certain areas, it's not about telling us what to do, but it is a collection point for them for the data they need to be able to direct their resources.
But they, they demonstrated they have that data.
We have a single data point for a single year, for a single age, and what we are requesting the school board is permission to actually gather that data over time, which allows us to understand, is this an anomaly, or is this a pattern? Are the interventions that the county or that other local agencies engage in, or the information campaigns, or the programs that we put in place effective or not? It allows us to measure and track cohorts over time to see if those interventions are having a positive impact or no impact at all, so it's really related to not only understanding where we stand from a data standpoint over time and what reality looks like, but it's also being able to measure the efficacy of the programs that we put our taxpayer dollars against in order to make sure that they're effective.
Well, my question about it is, we send home information about vision, we send home information about hearing, you wanna collect this information on BMI, but if a child is overweight, I don't understand then why it would not, you would not want to notify the parents that some corrective action needs to be taken. I mean, it sounds like you're, you're collecting it in the aggregate, but the aggregate does not address the needs of, of the children, and I'm just trying to get an understanding of what this is supposed to do.
Sure, I can give some perspective on the thinking, weight and BMI are topics that can be particularly sensitive to, for families and particular individuals, and for us to measure the efficacy of our programs, we don't necessarily have to be able to identify the child, we have to be able to identify the cohort and the population, and we need to understand whether it be by zip code, or by school assignment, or by area, whether the interventions that we're making in each area, which will be different, because the challenges and the underlying drivers will be different in different parts of our community, and so that is an option, and there are some, there are some school districts that have, have made the policy decision to do that parental notification, but we did not feel that that level of data was necessary in order for us to measure whether or not the programs that we're doing are effective, and, and we feel that, you know, the, the minimal level of invasiveness in the data required to measure efficacy of our programs is what's critical.
Because this would allow you, if I understand it correctly, is that all you're adding to it is the height and weight, and then, because you're already doing the vision and hearing, and then looking at the system as a whole, you would be able to tell what grade levels, what areas and so forth.
Correct, and, and we'd have the data from kindergarten, but then we could say, well, what happened between kindergarten, first, third, or by the time they get to middle school, and so what's happening over time for a cohort, as well as where do we stand as a population in, in total?
And the information doesn't go anywhere, does it? Don't you just compile the, the, for the, for that particular grade level or group at that particular school, then you could look at the system as a whole, at our fourth grade as a whole, throughout the system and so forth?
Correct.
And then you also do dental screenings, right?
That is correct, the, the health aramas also do dental screenings, although those are generally done on a different day.
Mm-hmm, I mean, I really don't, I don't have a problem, I, I see where the information could be valuable, if we're doing vision, hearing, dental, I really see no...
But they're being notified about those things, I mean, you know, I, I mean, I don't have a problem, don't get me wrong, I, I don't have a problem with it, I just don't understand the rationale for doing it if you're not gonna use it.
But they, they do use it.
Well, they use it in the aggregate.
Countywide.
Countywide, but I mean, if you've got, you know, it's like, I, I understand, she said, you know, that was a point in time that they showed us at the last meeting, but nevertheless, that's a point in time that identified an, a, a section of the county that they felt needed to be addressed, now, I mean, the question becomes, what, what plans, or what would they be doing to help to rectify, if you've got a, if you've got a school that has a high BMI rate for, say, third graders, is the county planning to start programs at that school that students would be expected to participate in, you know, we keep hearing that we don't do phys ed like we used to, because we hadn't got time, we got too much stuff to cover, and I, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, but I don't understand what's gonna happen with it, why it's even being done.
Those would be programs that the county would set up, in, in certain areas of the county, I would think.
The intent, the intent is not to tell any organization what to do, or how to do it, or to impose any type of requirement on anyone, the intent is to provide the data to the county and to the working group of folks that wish to work with the county, to identify what are programs, what are the best evidence-based programs to deploy, and where to deploy them, and who might choose to voluntarily want to participate to deploy those programs, we have organizations in our community today that are focused against different aspects of obesity, but do not necessarily have the data to know where they might choose to implement their program, or there may be another evidence-based program that's associated with their parent organization that they might choose to want to implement if they understood what the underlying driver was in a particular part of the community, so again, this has no intent, way, shape, or form intended to drive the actions of anyone else, this is really about being able to track the data over time and looking at the efficacy of what programs the county or any other voluntary program that a, a nonprofit may choose to, to put in place.
So do you have programs that are currently in place?
Could you be more specific in your question?
Well, you're, you're saying you want to use this data to, to gauge the efficacy of your programs, what programs do you have in place that you need to, to gauge?
For example, we have partnerships that we have with Smart Start, which is healthy eating programs, and looks at healthy eating and healthy weights, we have, there have been requests in the budget for a family nutrition position at the Cooperative Extension, that would be, a position that would be able to look at implementing programs in that particular area, so there are a number of programs that are being contemplated, the, the challenge, quite frankly, is that this is a very high-level look at the data, and it doesn't really tell us what all the drivers are underneath, there's more analysis that needs to happen before you can say, what's the driver, and what is the program, or what's the right way to address that particular problem. Obesity is, is, looking at being overweight or obese is sort of like telling you that you have a check engine light that came on, we know that the check engine came light on, came on, but what's really causing that engine light to come on, there could be many different causes, there could be many different contributors, so it's about looking at that next layer of data and saying, well, what is actually driving that check engine light to come on, and then how do we sort of look at it over time to make sure that we're making progress, and if we're not, then implementing programs that are.
Okay, so then why don't you just track the, the people, or the children that are currently in the program? Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be a better way to, I mean, why do you need information about every child in the school system at a certain data point, or at a certain grade level, when you're trying to gauge the, the effectiveness of your program, I would think you would wanna track those students who started out in your program, to see if you, if, if, you know, the, the measures that you've taken to teach healthy eating and all of those things have had an effect.
We're looking at things on a programmatic basis, but we're also looking at a population basis, we're also looking at multiple sets of individuals and multiple sets of programs, and so being able to track it over time also helps us predict and identify opportunities that we may not be aware of that actually exist, and match those evidence-based programs to those opportunities, so having that data actually gives us, it gives us the view out the windshield, so that we can actually see what's coming in the future, or see what's evolving over time, is there patterns and changes that allow us to respond to that data, so the request is really based on, not only over time as we implement programs, being able to check, to check their effectiveness, but also using that as an ability to say, where are programs needed, what are the right programs based on the under... where are programs needed, what are the right programs based on the underlying drivers, and then when we implement those programs, were they effective?
So is the reluctance to approve this, see if I understand, because we're looking in their ears, we're looking in their eyes, we're looking in their mouth, is it, the problem with just adding the height and weight that, that's the problem here, or is it the letter?
I think that's, that's what bothers me about this, is it's, 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 where does this end? Uh, you know, it, it just feels a little too big brother to me. And I know you, you know, you're trying to gather data and information, but at some point, you're going to want to use that information to implement programs that may start out voluntarily, then may become mandatory. So I, I, I just, I don't think it's any of your business, to be quite honest with you.
See, I have no problem with gathering the data, because it's confidential. I mean, they're just gathering, and there's no one requiring anyone to take part in any type of program that I'm aware of now, or in the future. I think that's where I would have a problem, as long as it's voluntary, that in the future. But I can see where, if you don't have the data, it's kind of hard to know where, if I'm understanding this correctly, where to set up your programs and so forth. This allows you, the data, to do that. And, you know, if I had a child in school, I, you know, like I said, they're, they're checking her hearing, her vision, uh, what else was it? Her teeth, or, you know, dental and so forth, because I remember all those things when I was at Warner Park Elementary School many years ago, the, the things that they did.
They used to take your weight, too.
Yeah, they did.
There was no problem with taking your weight.
They got our height, weight, everything. And, uh, most parents, I think, kind of appreciated the fact that, that some things were being done to, you know, and, and, I, I don't really see that as an intrusion. Maybe I'm overlooking something, but I don't really see it as an intrusion on, on parental rights, or confidentiality.
Well, I just, I think it's a slippery slope.
Well, I'd see where, if programs were to come later, that you will do so and so. I think that's where this board would have a problem. But to me, we're, we're doing this anyway, and just to add height and weight, uh-
See, my problem-
I don't just see it as a big, any big deal.
My problem with it is, they're collecting the data, but I don't see that they're doing anything with it. I mean, I would be more-
Well, that's more, even more reason not to be upset about it.
Well, I'm not upset about it. I mean, I mean, I, you know, I, I'm just simply wondering, we, we, we have these issues about obesity, and, which, by the way, I mean, I've, I've got to say, using BMI to measure anything, I think is, is pretty stupid, because if, I mean, I don't consider myself to be severely overweight, yet I am obese by BMI.
My check engine light came on a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I know that, but, but I'm saying, you know, we've, we've got these, if, if we do believe that there is an obese that she talks about, we'll be able to do study, well, to do studies, you're going to have to go back to individuals. I mean, you're going to have to identify, do you have a thyroid problem? Do you have a, is it a case where the parents don't cook healthy meals at home, but they're taking them to McDonald's, and Burger King, and Hardee's, and that's where they're getting all their meals? I mean, at some point in time, to do what she's talking about doing, clearly, they're going to have to start getting specific child by child by child by child data. Now, my question simply is, if you're going to collect this data, why not use it to help a child be healthier?
Well, I think that's the intent, in the long run, but they have to know where to focus those programs.
Well, I think they already know.
They know that, they have that.
They showed us that.
Well, from the, those maps that, uh, well-
Let me ask this question. Is the data collected for the individual child released in any way?
No, sir.
So Johnny or Sally's height and weight's not released?
No, sir.
Okay.
I think it's just an aggregate of the, say, the fourth grade, countywide, this was the average.
Correct. X percentage of children had a BMI classification that fell within the X characterization.
I mean, it's no big secret, I guess it was a look around, really.
I think I just always say-
I mean, really.
It's, it's the truth.
Yeah.
It's the truth. I mean, it's, it's, it's math. Calories in versus calories out.
That's what they told me about my-
It's not rocket science.
That's what they told me about my check engine light. They keep talking about those calories.
All right, so the, we have a form that all, if I understand correctly, we're just adding to it the height and weight. So do we want to vote on, there was a motion made to approve that, is that right?
Yes.
So we can just do that, and for it, vote for it, and if you're opposed to it, vote against. It's the only thing I know to do that, uh, any other comments? Any, any other suggestions?
The only, the only comment I would make is that I like Jeanette's suggestion of a, of an opt-in form, or a, a form that means, if I return this form, I'm, I am consenting to this, I'm aware of it, and I'm consenting to it, as a parent.
So would you like to amend the motion to state that we'll use this, but it'll be an opt-in? I mean, is that-
Yes. That would work, for me. I do think the parents need to know what is taking place, and that they have a choice, and that, um, when they opt in, it's on file, so there's no-
I mean, I have no problem with it, but I just can't imagine-
Well, I think sometimes, you know, I'm a parent, and it's quite often that I don't see information that comes home to me, especially with three boys. But, you know, I don't, I, I don't know about things, or I'm not aware that things are happening, until either after the fact, I may have wanted to opt out of that situation, or I, I may never get it at all. Uh, so, you know, I, I think sometimes we rely on the ignorance of the parent to slide these things through. And I just want to make sure that if, if you all are intending to approve this, that, that, that the parent is aware of it, that the parent has consented to it, and, and asked to, or consented to collecting that information.
I mean, I just, you know, when my daughter's in school, I couldn't care less if they checked her for height and weight and so forth. So what, uh-
But they didn't have technology today to share all that information, and we don't know where it's going to go.
And just to, and just to clarify on that point, there is no sharing, the names are not being recorded, the birth dates are not being recorded. It's not, we are not recording any identifiable information about the child. You will know that there were X number of children that fell into this percentile of BMI.
And what you record is like a fourth grade female student, and you record the height and the weight, and that's it.
Eighty, eighty-seventh percentile, which puts them into this week category.
Okay, so we, so we, well, we have a motion in a second to approve this the way it is.
But didn't we have an amendment?
Not yet. I, I asked if anyone, would you want to amend it to, say, to make it an opt-in?
Opt-in.
I second that.
Okay. Any other comments on the amended motion? All those in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now the motion will be the, uh-
As amended.
As amended, with the information here, but it'll be an opt-in. All, if we have a motion in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item D, DC Virgo Preparatory Academy Year-Round Calendar Proposal, appendix N, Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you, sir. At last meeting, we received information from Dr. Irazari, the principal of DC Virgo Preparatory Academy, regarding the benefits of a year-round calendar.
Excuse me, Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Could you speak a little bit closer in the mic?
Yes. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
At last meeting, we received a, information from Dr. Irazari, principal of DC Preparatory Academy, regarding the benefits of transitioning to a year-round calendar, and we would ask that you approve Virgo transitioning to a year-round calendar for the sixteen, seventeen school year.
Move for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved.
Thank you.
Item E, the Watt Contract, appendix N, Dr. Holliday.
Couldn't help it when y'all were talking about height and weight a while ago, but remember the football-
You're determined to get that story in there, aren't you?
The football, the football programs that came out when I was playing football, you know, always had our height and weight listed, and I was always twenty pounds heavier and two inches taller. I mean, that's just kind of how it worked. I mean, you know, just, I had to do something. I was a hundred fifty-five pounds, and I said I was a hundred and eighty-five pounds, and I was six-one, and I've probably never been six-one in my life, but that's what I was. Anyway, story probably has no relevance, but I like that story. I'm asking that you approve the Watt Contracts. We do this every year. We have our three school-based clinic sites at Laney, Ashley, and New Hanover. It's been a really good partnership. We sent you some information a couple of weeks ago about this. This is just asking us to continue these programs that we already have in existence. So Mr. Chair, members of the board, asking for your approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any comments, questions?
Yeah, just a quick one. So really, all the school system is doing is providing space.
That's correct, and the billing is, is on a sliding scale.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Thank you. Item F, Parent Notification Renewal Contract, appendix O, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you. This is our Blackboard Connect Five, which is what we used to call the Alert Now. It's, it's our annual renewal of this contract. It's a great product, and you all have, all gotten it, probably some of you, especially Ms. Koval and Ms. Eastep, with all the children that you have in your house, you're probably getting eleven million calls from us, and y'all probably sick of it. But it really helps us, especially when we have issues, and, and, you know, when we're having issues like we've had over the past couple of weeks, when we have lockdowns, and, you know, water issues and things of that nature, the principals are able to get that out to the parents pretty quickly. So we just ask that you allow us to continue this program.
Move for approval. Second.
Questions?
How does, how does this, just out of curiosity, how does the, how does the Connect Five work? Do you, does, do you call into a number and record the information, then it goes back out? How does it, is it a, is it a standalone program?
As far as I know, Ms. Koval, it's magic.
It's magic.
It's, it's actually, in the old days, you had a phone dialer. And it would, if you had a phone calling system, it called, it took forever to do it. This is all computer-based. We have access, it's, it's all web-based, so we call in, we have the system, and the school can do it themselves, or we can do it from my office. Ms. Angivine or a couple of other of my staff members can do it very well, and we can do it very quickly. And it can call just about every number in the system within thirty minutes. It's all web-based. So we call the number, and usually we'll get Ms. Black, or one of our other Hispanic translators to translate the call, and sometimes we have people at school that can do it if they're doing it at school, and we translate it, and we can get that call and that, and, and the translated call out, like, in thirty minutes. So it's very fast. It's not analog dialing, it's through, dawn, what is it? It's magic, yeah.
It's magic.
I mean, really, it's, 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 I, I don't know the technical, I'm, I'm not trying to be a smart aleck, really, I'm not. I just really don't know the technical piece of it. I do know that it's computer-based, and instead of the old analog, having to dial every number, and then it take you to ten o'clock at night to call, it can do, boom, in thirty minutes, we've got them all called.
Right. Okay. That was curious. I didn't know if it was a program that we have internally, or-
It's all done out of the company's- Yeah, the company does it, but we have access, this New Hanover County Schools, and then each individual school has the ability to do their own as well. And they can also do groups within the school, like, Mr. Nance can call bus routes, I mean, if we have an issue. So, and, and schools have the ability to put in athletic teams, and call the athletic teams. If your team's going to be late, you can do that. I mean, we, we have the ability to do some things with this system that are, that are pretty amazing.
So you, you can set up groups, like, I guess, you call it like that?
Yeah, I've gotten, I've gotten, I call them robo-calls, but I've, I've gotten a call about a, a bus route, specific to my children's area. Just, you know, a delay or whatever, so, yeah.
It is highly customizable.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's a long way from the old phone dialer. I mean, it's a long way from here.
It's also used for checking attendance, if we have students or-
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for reminding me of that, because we, 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 a couple, at your suggestion, a few years ago, we started doing what we call a safety call every morning, which, which means we call after we get attendance taken, and basically, you know, kids think, well, they're trying to, you know, they're trying to get me in trouble. But if something happens between school and home, and you get a call, and we've had parents saying, I, I sent my kid to school, why aren't they there? I mean, so, so that was at your suggestion, and we've done that, and we were able to do it, with, with, with the calling system.
That, that has actually been very helpful, because that's happened to me before, where my, I dropped my son off, my twins, and I got a call that, that one of my twins was not at school, and I knew he was at school, so I called, and what happened was the, the teacher had accidentally marked him absent when it was supposed to be the next child. So there was a, there was an error in, in reporting, but it was-
Yeah, and your boys are honest, but sometimes, we, we have situations where, where kids actually do stuff they're not supposed to do.
They would never do anything like that.
Right.
They would, Dr. Holliday, they would never.
But it has, it has really helped us with some kid, and, and, and there, and there've actually been a few emergencies where, 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 where the kid couldn't get to school, something's happened, and, and we're able to find the kid. So it, it's been, it, it's a great tool.
That's something every mama says, there's a good boy, he's a good boy.
Yes, he is a good boy. I was in a total panic, too. They found him.
Yeah.
Yeah, I might have been in trouble. Uh, any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item G, Amendment Number Two, to the Cooperative Agreement between the Norcon Division of Vocational Rehabilitation Services, appendix P, Dr. Holliday.
I don't have any cool stories with this one, I'm just going to ask that you approve this. This is our annual renewal of this as well, so I ask that you renew this agreement.
Move for approval.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item H, Continue Agreement with EduLog of GPS Services on Yellow School Buses, appendix R, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. As you recall, last year, the board approved the utilization of EduLog as our GPS tracking device. We would like to continue using that this year, and recommend that the board approves that.
Move for approval.
Second. Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Thank you. Item I, Selection of Professional Land Surveyors for 2014 Bond Projects, appendix S, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You have before you a selection of several surveyors for the different bond projects, and they're annotated on your, on your sheet, and we request that the board approves selection of these professional surveyors.
Move for approval.
Second.
I do have a question, though.
Question, Ms. Higgins?
I, 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 I just don't understand, and maybe there, some of this is not surveying, but, uh, I mean, I understand the Northeast Elementary, I understand College Park, I understand Blair, Noble Middle School renovation, la, the, uh, Trasp Middle School renovation. I understand if we're building new buildings, and you need to survey, and all that, but what are you doing at these schools that are being renovated?
This, well, this is required for, you know, the engineering work that needs to be done, we need to have accurate surveys of the, of the building, and the land, and everything else, uh, in order to-
So, so if you're renovating a gym, we're going to get a, a gym that's sitting there, in order, and you're going to renovate the interior of that gym, we're still going to have to have a survey made of that gym?
Well, we're doing a little more than that at these, at these, we're putting up new buildings at Laney, and-
I understand the new buildings. I understand the new buildings. I'm going to ask Mr. Anderson to come up and give us a hand, explaining what a surveyor does on a, on a renovation project? Yes, I would like to know.
Yes, I would like to know. And he doesn't have to explain the new buildings, because I understand the new buildings. I'm just-
The, the, the best example I can give you, the renovations, remember that they do, that part of our scope is to improve vehicular and pedestrian traffic flow around the site. So obviously, if we were going to make some improvements in the parking and driveways, we would need surveys to help us with that. Maybe new driveway permits required where we would need surveys. Some of the renovations may also include upgrading electrical services or other utilities, where we would need to locate underground utilities. There is not a lot of surveying on the renovations, you're exactly correct, but by going through the selection process now, if we need them during design, we'll have them available.
And we're just approving these people, we're not approving any cost at this point?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, did you say it is a requirement?
A requirement for-
To, to survey the facilities where you're not changing the footprint?
If, if we're doing ren, interior renovations, and the scope is limited to the interior only, then we might not have any surveying needs, and we would not, we would not utilize these firms.
So you'll pull that trigger only if you need to?
Correct.
Okay.
This only, this only is the selection process, and we assign the surveyors to the, to the project, so in the design process, if we need them, we have them available to us.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Anderson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item J, Beginning Teachers Recommended for Standard Professional Two Certificates, Appendix T, Dr. Wilmers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Request that the board approve the list of beginning teachers recommended for Standard Professional Two.
Move for approval. Second.
Questions? All the, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item K, Fire Alarm System Inspections and Repairs, All Facilities as Needed, Appendix U, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Request that the board approve the renewal of the fire alarm system.
Move for approval. Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item L, Medicine System, HVAC Repairs as Needed, Appendix V, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Request that the board approve the renewal of the medicine system contract with Johnson Controls.
Move for approval. Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item M, Physical Security for Carolina Beach Road Complex, Appendix W, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Request that the board approve the renewal of the physical security at the Carolina Beach Road Complex.
Move for approval. Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item N, Pump Grease Traps in Kitchens at All Schools, and Pump Clean Septic Tanks at One School, Appendix X, Mr. Hance.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Request that the board approve the Pumping Grease Traps Renewal Contract.
Move for approval. Second.
Just one school, that's?
I'm sorry, Septic Tank, it's just one school.
Which school is that?
Mersey Williams.
Pardon?
Mersey, Mersey Williams.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Thank you. Item O, Roof Repairs, Mr. Higgins, All Facilities as Needed, Appendix Y, Mr. Hance.
There we go.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Request that the board approve the roof repairs.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I see as needed.
We know you want to say something. Go ahead.
No, I, I, I got this.
You're good.
As needed, that's safe. Any other, any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Thank you. Item P, Solid Waste, West, Solid Waste Recycling Services, All Facilities, Appendix Z, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Request that the board approve the renewal of the solid waste removal contract.
Move for approval. Second.
Questions?
I do have one question, very quickly. Is the bill broken down so much for solid waste and something else for recycle?
Yes, we have a breakout between recycling and solid waste pickup. For each and every school.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item Q, We're Emitting, Item R, Glass Repair and Replacement, Appendix Double B, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Request that the board approve the renewal of the glass repair as needed contract.
Move for approval. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item twelve, Call to the Audience Under Our Non-Agenda Items. I would remind the audience that it's a three-minute time limit, and we do not get specific as far as calling individual names and so forth, but if you have a topic that you would like to discuss with the board, it's a three-minute time limit. We've had one individual sign up, Courtney Winter.
I'm going to go into closed session to discuss personnel.
And what would the numbers be for that, Mr. Bullard?
It'll be statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A six.
Okay, I have a motion to go into closed session, is your second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we are in closed session.
Dr. Holliday?